Is about two acres. The remainder of them, this one's about two and a half acres. This one's about two and a half acres and then this one's closer to three. Actually, this one might be a little bit closer to three acres. Yeah. So, there's still some minor adjustments to be made.
Right.
One of the big, uh, one of the big contributing factors to the size of these lots over on the western side of the property is going to be how much space is needed for this pond. Uh, that will be something that we'll figure out kind of on the front end of design here. That's one of the first things that we'll, uh, that we'll design for the project. Once we figure out how much land is needed for that, we'll take whatever is left and add it on to the developable area. And that is what's western lots. Any other questions?
So, there will be four, four sites that will be ready to go as soon as phase one.
Yep.
One of those sites is already, uh, spoken for or not?
No.
No.
Nothing spoken for yet.
Nothing spoken.
No. There's been people who've contacted us, but yeah, nothing spoken for yet.
Okay.
These four sites also are combinable. Yes, it could be somebody could take the two on the left and combine it, burst the whole thing, so it'd be three lots.
I see.
Okay.
In terms of, uh, project schedule, we're right on the front end of, of project design here, so basically the next critical step that's going to come out of this is I'll be back in December hopefully, uh, with, uh, with some middle of these plot documents. So, that'll include basically a thirty percent level design, um, and, uh, the final document that will, um, basically layout, here's, here's where your right away is going to be located, here's where these lots are going to be actually plotted out, where the, those actual lot lines, uh, uh, end up being filed with the county. That's, that's, that's the middle. Um, beyond that, uh, we'd be on roughly the same completion schedule as the Red Wing Avenue project, um, looking for having all of the construction plans, specifications ready for our springtime bid. Early winter, springtime bid. I've got the last slide here. So, we've gone over that, that, that overall layout. One thing I just did, kind of want to plant the seed for at least is when I submit those, uh, that actual plot of the interior and final plot will come at the same time. Uh, one of the requirements of that is going to be, any of these new streets will have to be named and there'll have to be a subdivision name associated with that. So, um, if that is something that you guys could discuss, uh, doesn't necessarily need to be during this meeting, but just be given, taken into consideration, um, it would probably be good to have that, uh, information ready by the next meeting.
Got anything else? Okay.
Okay. Anything else? That was it for the meeting. Okay. Then I guess we'll move on to legal. And under legal, we have a new on sale and Sunday liquor license.
Yeah, so we have a application from Alex Rivera.
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 Okay.
Who is, um, in the process of buying the hotel, is that correct?
Correct.
And so, he's, as part of that, is applying for a liquor license, um, for on sale and Sunday liquor sales. And I asked Alex, I had to app, excuse me, asked Alex to come to the meeting to just kind of, you know, give you guys a, just a little brief overview of what his plans are and so you could meet him and you could meet up the council and kind of, you know, start some dialogue. So, I don't know if you want to come up and just talk about real briefly what you plan on doing?
I mean, hopefully just a little fair thing, is bringing food because I know when I first came looking at the place, there was nowhere to eat here. And it blew my mind that you guys got such a beautiful town with nowhere to eat and public. And I just couldn't, I just, I couldn't fathom that. So, for sure, bring back food, again, some kind of nightlife, some kind of entertainment, hopefully can draw the crowds, get more people to start coming because it just seems like the time that it did come, I didn't see a lot of traffic, I didn't see a lot of people. I just saw everybody, you know, eight, nine o'clock, it was, everything was shut down and nothing was going on. So, hopefully I can bring some kind of energy to the town. Um, small background, I was born in Cuba, came when I was five years old. Uh, busting my butt, I mean, nothing was ever given free. I ended up getting a scholarship to those same comics, they got my business degree, you can go there. Graduated, little by little, started, uh, I did everything from sales to marketing to the mortgage until everything just crashed. Uh, invested in this small car lot that I still own, I've had over ten years. Uh, owner operated, I'd lived in there as well. I bought a bar in town that needed a lot of re-ramp in St. Paul. Own that for probably over five years. I just met with the city council members there today, Jay Prince, I'm being honored for, uh, small business in that area. I'm getting an award for, uh, basically, it's, the way I understood it, it was kind of confusing where they were standing, but just for best ran business in our community within the last five years. So, that's a plaque that I'll have out and it'll be on the website for us to have. And then I took that bar from, I mean, bad, it was definitely a bad neighborhood to, we cleaned everything out, we, you know, we ramped it, we got it, we came up with a new floor plan, new food, and then just, basically just followed, you know, my protocol, like those rules, just kind of make sure you kind of see a problem before it actually occurs. And I'm real big on that. I mean, if, I, I can, I don't know if it's a gift or what, but I can just, I can sense it, I can see it. I mean, I know a lot of numbers, problems, uh, running, running a bar, it just, it just comes natural to me, it's something that I think that I could bring into you guys' community to where there's a nightlife, there's something that people can actually go do, you know, the place to sit down and eat. And I mean, anybody got any more questions? I'm free.
So, are you, um, did you, are you buying both the buildings?
I'm buying just the hotel.
The hotel.
Or not a hotel, because I'm gonna eventually kind of, that whole idea of me out off, if it was functional or not. My goal was to make them rental, you know, upstairs one better. I heard that you guys needed a horrible, horrible living, that's a focus up there. I mean, he definitely built it out, the plan that the guy had in his head, I get it, but I think he overbuilt it for what the community really needed. Liquor you go in and it's beautiful, but you need to address what actually is here. And I mean, what people want, and I mean, that's one of the things that I have a whole plan on doing once we finally open. Kind of just put kind of a suggestion box, I know I was making it full because everybody goes, and I have something to say, implement those things that I think would work and some that wasn't, but I think having the community involved is huge. So... But yeah, for, to answer the whole question, so I did the bar and then I bought the house behind it, the new one that I guess, I think it said burnt down, it was built in two thousand sixteen, I bought that one as well.
Okay. So... And do you have a, a timeline of when you think you open her up?
I am waiting on you guys, I mean, I, I got a team together, I wanted to put an ad to you guys, I just found out the paper that was actually local, that now is no longer here, it's still here, but being ran by, I want to say?
Fairbowl.
Fairbowl, I think it is?
Mm-hmm.
So, I wanted to kind of reach out to one of them, get an ad in there, so I want to give a, kind of put money back in the community and hire people from the community to help get them trained in the way that I know they'll run it the way it should run. And I mean, I'm gonna bring people from my other bar to make sure we get that training that needs to be done here because rumors can go forever, but it's gotta run the right way. And I mean, I don't think it'll be ran the right way from everything that I've heard, so...
Um, are you gonna have onsite management or is it?
I will be there. But my plan is to be there probably for the full first year before, everybody needs to be trained the way I want them to be ran, so my goal is to eventually not phase out, but you know, instead of coming up every single day, three days a week, I'm here, you know, Fridays, you're sure for payroll, manage those meetings, I can do a lot of places, I usually do those once a month, you know, get there, figure out what problems, if there is any fix, whatever we need to do, and then I'll have an actual onsite manager all the times that I'll train. And also was bringing in Rick as, uh, partner little by little to kind of train and show how to do everything because, like I said, I'm one man, I'm gonna definitely miss things and I want to make sure whatever I miss, he can pick up.
Next two questions I got is, uh, the hotel, I think was full most of the time.
It was.
And that, and that's something that we could use, could really use. And also, I'm interested in your type of, uh, food that you're gonna have, are you gonna have like a breakfast?
Well, I want to have, I want to have for sure breakfast, I love breakfast, that's the one that I'll eat, so at my other bar, I did breakfast all day, like you want me to order breakfast at twelve o'clock at night if you want. That's a big thing for me, I've always liked that, but, uh, like I said, I want to bring in something different, I want to bring, you know, still bar food, burgers, appetizers, you only have half hour for lunch, make sure you can get in and out when you need to be. But I want to cater more to, uh, you know, a good, have a good steak on the menu, plus from my heritage, I want to bring in Cuban food, where it brings in, you know, plantains, rice, pork chops, salads, you know, something that brings that authentic flavor because I think you guys need it, I mean, I think for real. I do good, I do good at my bar, but I just, I couldn't fathom, when I came, he brought me to look at it, I'm like, you know, I like it, let's sit down and meet and let's talk numbers and figure out what makes sense. I'm like, let's go eat, he was like, that's not gonna happen, with me, it's not gonna happen. And then we were gonna wait for BMW, but then they don't open till four or six or something like that, so I was just like, you guys are starving, you have your family, you're going home every day, because it made no sense to me. So...
There was, there was great community support for that restaurant when it was open, it was just, it was something internal that didn't...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But, uh, but yeah, the, yeah, um, the community support for that was, was very strong and, um, I think that you see, most, most people would say that, that, uh, one thing about Kenyon, we rally around our, our local businesses and, and everyone who is, uh, trying to help make the, the community better, we rally behind them, so...
And I know you guys have a lot of old traditions, which, that's how I was raised, with old traditions. You know, you guys still have light ceremonies, like you don't, you lose that when you're in the city, you lose all that.
Yep.
And when you come to a smaller town where everybody's still, I mean, everybody, you know, file down the street your bill, and you know, it's just, it's a good feeling to have to know, hey, you're part of that community, I, I'm all for it, so I'm excited.
One thing that we will invite you to is KAVA, which is Kenyon Area Business Association, which I believe there's me in around there.
Yeah, there is.
But, uh, get involved, it's like once a month, it's, uh, the businesses itself, sometimes there's a good number, sometimes there's a few, but it's a, a thinking, it's ideas to work with, so definitely make a plan, it's in the evening or around five, six o'clock usually.
Six.
And, uh, about an hour or so.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm on the board as well, at, close to my bar, through all the business there, so we kind of run something like that.
Yeah.
We deal with more, a lot bigger concerns, just businesses, you know, like you guys were discussing here, you know, what's, we can improve in our community, like, we gotta make sure down, down in the cities where public works no longer does, take up the trash, so we just set it all up to where all the business owners now, hey, let's take the initiative to do this ourselves, because nobody's gonna do it for us. So, we're bringing down the trees, we're taking out all the trash, like this, to make sure that you represent the community you're in, and I've always been there about that, so... Hopefully, you're right here for you guys.
FYI, the Kenyon leader does have an office here in town. It's got to be somewhere on...
No, it's pretty close to it.
Oh, they closed it?
Yeah, they closed it.
No.
Never mind though.
Yeah.
I just moved back to town.
Oh, 'cause I just got here two and a half hours right away, I'm like, oh.
Yeah, no, I thought it was still open.
But I mean, I would take that because that's huge information to have, like I thought when they were running this hotel, it was failing, and I didn't know if it was just poor management or if it was just like they just didn't have the people to do it.
Well, I think that was part of what it was, because I know there are numerous people that, uh, that booked it ahead and they were full, but then again, it could be a case of where it wasn't supplied and ready up, you know, not ready to go. So, that may be, but I would look at it for what, what's up there, certainly nicer.
Right, it's beautiful, I mean, like I said, they definitely put money and thought, and I think, my opinion is coming from the outside in, I think it was more of a arrogance type of thing where, you know, my dad has the money and I'm doing it, and somebody didn't have to work the butt off to actually get it. Toward me, I know nothing's been handed, I gotta work my butt off to get to where I wanna get it, and that's how it's always been, that's how my mom and dad raised me and that's how it's been in my life.
Yep. Yeah, I would say, uh, I don't, I can't remember how many units were up there.
Five.
Five. If you, you know, even...
I was thinking just use a couple as rentals, I still have income to back me up and then it's just a deal, but that's...
Yeah, even if you kept a couple of them around, it, it, there, there are definitely, um, there are a lot of occasions where people are looking, and here, it's either fifteen miles to Fairbowl, fifteen miles to Zimbrotta, or twenty miles to Cannon Falls, where you wanna to stay, so, um, it, yeah, you might wanna, you might wanna consider that.
Yeah. I guess he wants me, because I'm gonna live and die here for a while, it's gonna be a while before he gets running the way I want, so I'll be getting...
I'll be in one of those. He's pretty often.
Knock, knock, knock.
Yeah. Al, we got this, what's up? I'm here. Hey.
Okay.
All right. Any more questions?
That's good news.
It's very good news.
Good, good.
I'm excited. Can't wait till you guys try, I mean, if you guys have had Cuban food, it's pretty good.
Well, as soon as the word got out, it was rah rah rah.
Wasn't good.
I was a tip.
That's what we wanted.
And even from the area around, uh, people come through, especially in the summer, you know, it's really, a lot of people from literally a lot of places heard about it and liked the atmosphere, the building itself, all of these sort of things, and if we can build on that, helping you along, you helping us to see, you all.
So, Mark, are you recommending, uh, are we at the point to approve the liquor license?
Yeah, I think you can approve it, um, contingent upon the, you know, background check, um, contingent upon the...
Yeah, just background check, uh, insurance and...
Insurance. Insurance is a city order, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a complete city order.
Background check, I know there won't be any showing ahead, you go from my bar to five years, so...
Yeah, no, I think it'd be, it's really, just improve those conditions, you'll be fine because he'll be done with that, Lee will be done with any background, so...
Probably I'll do it everything Scott said and put it into a motion. Whatever, whatever conditions he laid out.
How many, did you get that?
I'll say that.
Okay, we got him.
What was it?
I had no...
Approve on sale and Sunday liquor license for Kenyon Bar and Grill with, um, contingent upon those items that Scott...
Good, then I don't have to repeat, thank you.
That works.
Okay. Will you do the motion now? Is it gonna be named Kenyon Bar and Grill?
Yep.
Okay.
I just figured that the community, that we deserve, that we represent, in the same token, everybody in the surrounding area is gonna know, okay, it's Kenyon Bar and Grill, you can't, you can't miss that, you can't get it. So, I had a couple of different things, but I don't think you guys liked them, but I know Kenyon kind of the bill.
Yeah.
Well, let's go with it this way then, an application for a liquor license for the Kenyon Bar and Grill has been received, and there's a motion on it and it's been seconded. So, all in favor of the motion for the liquor license, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, a pass.
Old business. Thank you.
Naomi's in the background, she's a background in the corner there, it's Lee, you'll see him over there later.
Hopefully.
We, we can kind of, you'll get to know him after a while, we're all...
Hopefully just come in and check on, on the situation whilst going, not...
Legal. Mr. Riggs, do you have anything?
I'll be on that, uh, the liquor license on that.
Okay. I'll then go on to old business?
Oh, um, financials, what was that? No, it's purchase, I guess, so...
Yeah, good answer. Old business, which is with, uh, proof, a lease or purchase of a public works department public truck. Wayne, something to bring in on it?
Well, this is, um, basically just like financing, if you want to give an update on...
Well, we, we, uh, over a year ago, we put some, a lot of talk together on putting new cloud trucks together, replaced the steering. And with some delays with Freightliner, uh, it's finally in, and it's at Christ year right now, it's a body put on it. So, it's, Freightliner sent us our first bill on it, and it's what this lease is for.
So, I'd like to ask the council to approve is, and I did not get a quote, an updated quote from Kinetic, which is through the, so, Security State Bank of Kenyon, but I'd like to ask the council to approve, the terms will be very similar to the lease quote that you have in the packet, um, for the council to go ahead and authorize us to, you know, enter into a lease agreement with, um, Kinetic Leasing and the Security State Bank of Kenyon. The terms will be, there's a quote, let's see here, thanks. There's a quote, I was looking in the package, there's a quote, maybe it's not in the package. Um, so, anyway, the purchase price of the truck chassis equipped is two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six fifty-one, this was based, was approved last year by the council. It's based on state contract pricing. Um, the, so what we would ask for is approval to enter into a quote for a seven-year tax-exempt lease. The principal amount of the lease is at two hundred and twenty-six thousand, the term would be seven years, and interest rate, I believe, where quota was three point eight nine percent. So, the annual payments would be thirty-four thousand, six six six. The first payment will be made next year. Um, and I'm also, um, waiting to get a quote from Kinetic Leasing through the Security State Bank, which would be the same terms as this other, should be the same terms as the other lease, but what I'm asking for is approval to, you know, move ahead with that lease. Um, we have to pay for the truck chassis part of it, which is the hundred and five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, so... And this would come out of, uh, capital, um, these leases normally come out of capital, the capital fund, we build that in the budget, and this was put in the twenty budget, twenty twenty budget, so, anyway, I don't know if there's any questions on...
By making a motion on that, our, we're just moving ahead with the chassis, but it's still open as to who is actually gonna get the, the lease on it, is that correct?
Well, I can get leases from both places and...
Oh, you haven't got...
I mean, I can, right, I don't have the quote from the bank yet, but if that's the same as this other quote, I would recommend, you know, to try to stay local, go with that, and that's who we've dealt with on other leases recently, so unfortunately, I didn't get a final quote from them before tonight, but, um, so I don't know if there's any question on that.
What do you guys think, council?
I would say that I would more agree with you, the lease, um, how do you say it?
Yeah.
To Mark, let's do it, let's lease through.
Or we get the better terms from...
Wherever we get the better terms.
Yeah.
Is there a deadline on that one?
Well, the deadline is paying for the chassis, we don't want that to go past, you know, thirty-one days or whatever, so, I, that's why I'd like to get the... The lease companies would rather pay the vendors directly than have us pay them and get reimbursed. We've kind of come across this several time, or several times now, so they would rather, you know, do the, they would rather directly pay the manufacturers of the truck and the, than they would have us pay and then get reimbursed, and I guess I'd rather do that too, so...
Okay.
That's why I'm asking for approval now versus next month, or whatever, or we would have approved, paid for it already.
I don't know, has anybody made the motion on it? If not, I will, to approve lease and purchase for the public works department blow truck for the chassis with...
Well, the lease will be for the whole thing.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, but I mean, I'm asking which, which one, we're going with security bank or...
Yeah, if you, if you want to designate them or if you, can you set up a motion so that, that we have two different quotes, then we can go with the lower one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Spell it out.
And approving the lease and subject to terms as the city administrator will determine their in the best interest of the city.
Okay, there we go, that's the motion that made it.
Second then.
Second then, okay, motion is made, it made in a second, going to attorney Scott Riggs, whatever he said next to him, I don't know, sorry about it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, the ayes passed, we're on our way. Okay, new business. Okay, here's City Hall computer service, server replacement, and from what I'm reading is it did a big crash job, is that correct?
Well, it hasn't crashed yet, but the problem is we can't update it, we can't get Windows updates, and we thought that we were good getting Windows updates, it's currently running Windows Server Seven, and they told us, well, originally the information that, and I, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not blaming anybody for this, but we thought we were good through, I thought like June of next year to get upgrades, but we're, boy, we can't, they won't support it anymore. And, you know, when you look at Windows operating systems, when they say Windows Seven, Windows Seven, there's about fourteen versions of that, and about seven of them are still under some semblance of updating, and about seven of them, you know, turned out this year. I mean, there's just a bunch of them, it's like version one, B, whatever. Anyway, we're, we can't update ours anymore, so it's time that we, you know, we have to replace that server, we have to get a newer Windows operating system, which is, I think, Windows Ten for server networks or whatever it's called. But anyway, in order to do that, we have to replace that server. Now, luckily, and last year, we put this in the budget, we were able to find a, a type of server that actually cost-wise was markedly less than, you know, the traditional, you know, large server with mirror hard drives and the whole nine yards. Um, it's called a network attached storage data file server, NAS or NAS server, and we put thirty-five hundred in the budget for that, and that was based on estimates from Aldrich Computer, the IT company that we normally work with from Northfield. Now, the server, when they finally were all said and done, they were able to come up with a quote of twenty-two fifty-two eighty-seven, which is less than what we budgeted, so, so that's all good. So, anyway, but we need to move ahead, kind of move ahead with this before, yeah, we do have a virus or we have something that crashes that thing, because I also can't update Norton anymore with it, so...
I'll, I'll move approval that administration can't allow to update the, uh, old decrepit house, still leak computer systems in the City Hall.
I was thinking that.
Okay, there has been a motion made in second, the City Hall computer server replacement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, it's passed. Okay. Next, um, to, a request by Keith Cook, travel to Highway Sixty Boulevard for Minda to complete Highway Sixty's speed study. Mr. Cook, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I would, I think I was in here last year and asked to get the speed reduced out there, because every road coming into the city give at least forty or less, but I'm in the city limits, my speed limit is sixty miles an hour, and it's impossible to get out on the road.
This way?
It's impossible to get out in the road at sixty miles an hour. It's dangerous.
So, you're talking about the, the, going up the hill?
Going up the hill to the city limits, which is beyond my driveway.
This is on the right, uh, coming, going west from Highway Sixty, this is the first place on the right-hand side on the city town.
Yep.
And then the next one, uh, I don't know who lives there next to you, and then it's, um...
Fred.
Fred, no, there's a house in between.
No, I'm the last, I'm the last one.
You're the last one, but going west, there's another home, actually, you're almost across from, uh, coming.
Yeah, that's Lexville. Lexville.
So, you, Keith, when were you in here, was it two years ago?
Was it two years or was it last year?
Yeah, I know. And so, what happened is we, the council authorized me to send a letter to Minda, we sent a letter to Minda requesting a speed study, and they didn't do anything with it.
They didn't do it?
No. So, that's the only thing that council could do again.
The only thing they did...
Is formally request that they do that again.
The only thing they did do is raise the speed limit five minutes.
Yeah. And that was the time that you were in.
The, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you, Keith, we can do it and, and I'm fine with doing it, but they are very stubborn about making any type of, of changes, they, uh, I mean, for years, we wanted them to do something by wanting to, you know, where, uh, to slow it down there, and they, they refused. They'll put in a roundabout, but they won't lower the speed limit, and you, and I, I think too, you know, for people who are driving that road coming into town and aren't familiar town and aren't familiar with it, you know, you don't realize you go down that hill and the stop sign is right at the, you know, right at the bottom of the hill, you know.
You realize the speed limit is sixty miles an hour through that intersection?
Right. It would make sense to slow people down so that they know they got a stop sign going there.
There is forty-five down there.
At, at the, after you get out, if you're going west after the stop sign, but going down to the stop sign.
There is forty-five, I say there.
No, it's not.
There is not.
There is not.
I might be able to.
Forty mile an hour.
I just, I just.
I might be able to add a little bit of insight as far as where MINDOT is coming from. This whole deal of, of requesting a, a speed study, and as it turns out, they end up raising the speed limit, happens probably the majority of the time in any city whenever these types of requests come about. The reason, um, why MINDOT has the speed limit set where it is, is they typically set their speed limits, uh, at a speed that they call the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So what that means is eighty-five percent of vehicles that are traveling, traveling on that roadway, uh, are going to be going sixty miles an hour or less, with only the remaining fifteen going faster than that. Um, they have loads of engineering studies and data to suggest that if you do not have the speed limit set, uh, at a speed that is consistent with that eighty-fifth percentile speed, if you're lower than that, then you're actually making the road less safe. Because, because you're saying that, okay, we're gonna post this to forty miles an hour, but nobody's going to drive forty miles an hour. People drive at the speed that they're comfortable driving. It's, uh, the, the speed limit sign, whatever it has posted up on that speed limit sign, is a very small factor in that overall decision as to what speed I'm comfortable driving. So that's just kind of the, you know, whether you agree with that or disagree, that's where they.
That's all fine and all, but when you come into the city limits of Kenyon, you shouldn't be slowing down.
Sure. So, you know, uh, uh, if you are interested in doing, you know, some type of, of action that may result in a lower speed, um, that's likely going to take some other type of improvement rather than changing a speed limit sign. So most typically what that means is making the road narrower, uh, or, or, you know, I know some of that area is kind of difficult to actually develop there, since it's not really developed in some of those areas, but, um, uh, it's all about making the road feel, feel less comfortable for people to be driving, you know, thirty miles an hour. If you're driving down residential road, uh, driving down Red Wing Avenue, if you're going fifty miles an hour, you're going to feel extremely uncomfortable and you're not going to drive that speed anymore. Um, so, you know, in comparison, if you're driving along the highway, you're going to.
I'd like to point out, though, when you come down and go around that corner, sixty miles an hour, it feels very uncomfortable.
There's a forty-five going up this way.
Well, there's, one thing, Mr. Cook, when, the imperative, when you come west on Highway sixty or raise the rest of the hill going this way west, that sign will raise it sixty miles an hour, you're telling the city.
There's like a, there's this people.
Exit right out here. And if I'm right, I'm sure I've traveled often enough, by your place, there is a sign that says sixty miles an hour.
Yeah, well, starts with a.
Between there and the stop sign, there's another one that says forty-five.
No.
I didn't see it.
It says forty ahead. It does not say forty miles an hour.
That's it, you're right. You're right on that.
And the forty mile an hour zone is beyond the intersection. So they roll right up to that stop sign at sixty miles an hour and it's a blind stop. It's dangerous.
Yep.
And another thing, looking at this, the state, am I correct, did give us the opportunity for the cities to somewhat adjust the speed limits within the city itself?
And help me apply some local out there.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, if we start going that way, I'm just looking at it, if we once open that can horns, we're gonna have numerous different, I want my, I want you to do a, a, an evaluation on this block and this block and this block. It just opens up too many different things of, of problems.
So you're just gonna sit here and bury your head in the sand and say, we can't do anything? Something dangerous like that?
It's just like it says right here, to complete a speed study and, or I mean, uh, MINDOT has completed it, and they raised it to sixty miles an hour.
No, no, that's, that's not true. That's not true. They raised all of the highways to sixty miles.
They never really did a speed study.
Not overall, they did.
Not because of that speed study.
Overall, they did.
Overall, they did.
Yes.
But it wasn't because of that speed study.
They never did a speed study.
They didn't?
I don't think so.
Well, they had to.
I'm not, I don't.
They went to various different ones?
They raised the, they raised that whole stretches of Highway sixty and other state, outstate highways to sixty. Yeah. So I don't believe they did a study on that specific stretch of road.
Oh, that, yes, I agree with that.
Yeah, so they never.
Well, could I ask the council to ask the state to do a study and maybe put a strong recommendation in that we slow it down there?
Yeah, I agree. Yep. It, it's their highway, you know, so all, all we can do is ask them to consider it.
Higher.
And, but yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor. I think, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're, um, familiar to the area, you know there's a stop sign at the bottom of that hill, but if you're not, it's a surprise. Uh, you know, you, you see sixty miles an hour and, and when you're coming from the east, it looks like trees and highway ahead of you, and then all of a sudden, there's a stop sign at the bottom of the hill, so.
Not, not only that, with the county junk, uh, garage out there, many close access trucks pulling in out of there.
Yep. And people hauling recycling out there and everything, so. Do you, is that an action you need?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion.
I, I would move that we, um, strongly request, um, the MINDOT, um, to do a speed study. I'd also, um, ask that, for the letter to be sent out to be, uh, CC'd to our representative Draskowski and State Senator, uh, Gagen, so that they're in on that as well too. That might, that might help.
Good idea.
I'd be good. I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made in second to have a speed study on Highway sixty, east of, uh, Kenyon, at the city limits. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. So, passage. Okay, we're going on with the next one here. Liquor store L and M quote for repair of the wall and tile in the entryway.
So you have a quote and a picture in the packet of some damage, um, at the liquor store into the outer entryway, we would call it. Um, the manager's requesting that the council approve repairs to that wall and replacement of the tile baseboards to the front entrance of the building. The contractor's estimate for Melanam is eleven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. It took a while to find someone to do that or to get that quote, so it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of a small, it's not a real great job, but we had a foreign contractor look at it, you know, Emerson. But what this would do would be, a lot of this is to repair that wall, but I think it's, it's kind of bad, um, descriptive wise, I'm not gonna say any more dramatic words than, but you walk into our building there and you got a hole, or when you walk out, you really see it, there's a hole in the wall there, the tile's broken, that, you know, we need to fix that, because I think it looks, it looks bad. So that's why we're asking for approval of that, um, of that estimate or contractor to go ahead with that work to fix that, so.
I did talk to Josh on Sunday about this, and, uh, he was saying he would try to get it as quickly as possible, but it may be springtime before it's actually done.
Yeah, hopefully they'll, they'll get to it over the winter.
Yeah. At least part of it said he could get done, but, uh.
At least get that wall, maybe get the wall repaired first, so whatever.
Okay, there's a motion on that to, uh, the L and M quote for an estimate eleven hundred and eighty-eight dollars? Need a motion on it? So, second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second for, uh, liquor store quote, repair of wall and tile in the entryway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass. Okay. Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-two, designating annual polling place. We have that motion on that. And that'll be right here in City Hall, right here.
Yep, this is a requirement from the, uh, state that, um, Secretary of State taught us, but we have to, you know, the law was changed, so every jurisdiction has to pass a resolution designating an annual polling place, even if you don't have an election that given year.
I don't, I don't know if I've ever brought up before, but has, has there ever been any thought of having the voting at, uh, our new fire hall?
Yeah, it was talked about two years ago. Um, at that time, the council maybe was somewhat split on it, but they decided to leave it here. Um, it was, but last year it wasn't talked about, but it's certainly a, an option, so. Makes more sense with parking and cars and traffic coming out and.
Down there, I mean.
Down there, yeah.
Well, that was discussed, and John, you were here.
Yeah, and I can't remember his name either.
I know Fred Larson was, was against, you know, moving.
Yeah.
And he liked, I think part of what he brought up was the location downtown. Um, but, I mean, I think you can make an argument for either, honestly, it's one of those things, you can kind of make a case either way, but there's some inherent, um, advantages out there. I suppose one of the concerns out there was, what if there's a fire first responder call and, you know, there's people in, and I think the people would come in the door and go to the left to the meeting room there, and so they wouldn't really cross somewhere until where the trucks and things like that were, and you could probably either lock doors or put up barricades and signs and stuff to try to separate that side. I don't know if that would be much of an issue. Parking maybe is a little bit easier at the fire hall, you know, people to get in and out. So, yeah, I don't know. I guess part of it too is tradition, that people have always come here to vote and, you know, probably gonna be confused, so I don't know. Those are some of the things that we're all.
You have no members on, what are your ideas? Yeah, I have heard people.
I, I just think that, you know, that there's not that much parking or good parking out here, especially for older residents. There, you know, you've got a couple of spots on the street, um, otherwise if they have to go to the, um, parking lot down the way, that's fine if you're younger, but if you're older, you're, that's walking uphill. Um, you know, in November, who knows what kind of weather you got? If it's icy and slippery, I don't know, I just, I, I, I personally prefer the, the fire hall, um, just 'cause I think you've got unlimited parking, you don't have any competition for space out there, um, and it's a community building. We should, um, you know, we put a lot of resources into it, we should use it a little bit too, I think is good. But that, that's, you know, that, what the majority decide is fine, um, but I just, I just kind of like that spot.
I agree with what Dan's saying, but also have we ever considered the school? I mean, gymnasium, uh, that's what, uh, other cities uses is the school gymnasium, so it works out. You have the massive parking area, um, it's at nighttime kind of thing after school hours. We have to talk to the school about it. I would say that, um, right now between the two, I mean, I think the fire hall would probably offer a good location, you know, we have that big room in there that probably would, I mean.
Space is tight in here when it's all set up.
What's that?
The space is oddly tight in here when it's all set up.
It is, I know, that's one of the downfalls. And, you know, one of the things that came up was, you know, like Holly and I would be here, if the elections go on, I would, you know, it's easy to get back here, but sometimes maybe that's not the best, like if one of us is over there, one of us is back here, you know, I guess, I wouldn't, from that standpoint, be concerned. I don't know Holly, if you would be, but I would think, you know, one of us could be there, and one of us could be here, and, you know, Sue's here, so I mean, I don't know, I think that we could probably make that work, but, you know, we haven't done it yet either, so it'll be a work in progress.
We don't have to decide this till December thirty-first, correct? No. I think it says that, um, by December.
Yes.
So maybe.
We need it before the school election.
For preliminary, we have to be ninety days before, and we have to decide ninety days before the first.
First of what?
That's the first election, so it would be a prime, is there some, does it say March?
It says it's in March.
And we have to have, if we're gonna change, we have to change ninety days before that.
So we could, we could table one month and.
Right, that's why we brought it up, because it has, it's earlier this year. They sent us emails from the county saying if we're changing, we need to get it done.
So you could table it?
I thi, I think, you know, we probably ought to have a discussion with the fire chief and, I mean, you know, maybe, um, maybe do some logistics. I, I, I hate to act, if we're gonna change it, I hate to act on it tonight impulsively without knowing if it's the right move or not, but, um, if we put her off for a month, that'd give everybody a month to think about it.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm open to your opinion. Well, I'm right the same way, so I think we're tenting towards the fire hall for right now. If that works for you.
Yeah, we can go and look at it. I could talk to, um, both, uh, Pete, the current chief, and then Lee Skillstead, the incoming chief. And I can, you know, Wayne and I can go up there and look at it. I mean, I think that room's bigger than this one, so we can, if there's any logistical thing, we can try to get this.
Elections are Tuesday, correct? Usually?
What's that?
Elections, we usually have two.
Yeah.
So our meetings are Mondays, so, um, we should have a meeting going on.
Yeah, and you guys could be there.
And if there's calls, we should park way back anyhow.
Okay.
Really wouldn't see an issue with it, you know.
Okay.
As, even if there was a fire call or a backup call, because we should park on the truck side, um, on our side of the buildings, and the front parking lot would be open.
Another thing that I feel about going down there, I've always liked that idea of being there, but it gives exposure to the fire department itself, what was built, so people can see what, you know, actually what they're, you know, built, what their money is going for. And it is a community building, and it should be used for it, just like you said.
I could use that same argument to build a school. I mean, is a school off, off the, not even being considered? I mean, a public place, we all pay for it.
The, the school is kind of.
A public place, but you don't.
The school is kind of, we have to deal with, the school, this way, we're.
Okay.
We've got to, we can make the decision, whereas there, we're waiting for the school to make their decision.
All right. School board decision. Yeah, we'd have to work something out with them, and if, in a thirty-day time period, it might be tight for this.
Maybe something for future consideration.
For the next one.
Yeah.
And the school has their elections here. Okay, so for whatever that's worth.
You can't park in front of the school during bus time.
Right, the, the voting actually goes from, what, seven in the morning till eight at night?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're getting, you're, you run into bus traffic.
Two different bus times.
Two different bus traffic, yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Well, Dan, you're up there all of the time, you're in front of the school.
Yeah, yeah, indeed, during the day, it'd be, it'd be, you're, but between seven and eight-thirty would be bad, and from about two forty-five to three-thirty would be bad. Uh, and then you have the after-school activities, which would be, yeah, it'd be, it'd be a lot busier up there, where the fire hall, let's hope it wouldn't be. But I don't know if we're missing something here, so I think as long as we got time, I'll, I'll move to table until the November meeting, uh, to give staff the time to look into it and, uh, see if it's a viable option. Move to put her on the November agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made in second to hold off one month until twenty November of twenty nineteen for a resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-two, designating annual polling place. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Okay, next one here. Kenyon Police Department, uh, sexual assault policy, chief, are you?
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me on. Uh, this is a post-board made of the policy, so they'll come up with policies that we have to follow. This was one of the policies, and I begged, borrowed, and stealed from Kennebals. It was a lot easier, so put a policy to follow. Um, Chief McCormick gave it to all of us and said, if you like it, use it, so that's what we did, and it's sent to the post-board preliminary, they accepted it, they said it was fine, so it's just standard procedure.
I was gonna say, I was very impressed with your legal writing.
Yes, people. Now that you've made it through. Yes, people didn't do that, so. He sent that to all of the small town chiefs and said, if you want it, you can use it. It's a lot simpler than the one at the post-board, I'm not hoping. So I like that it looked to be sufficient, and, like, you know, we won't use it a whole lot, but it's there, so we had to have it, so.
Yeah, you said, hold it right on my opinion of you.